Good evening. I'm Erv Hendricks and I'm from Henderson County. And I've been a supporter of Karl Mumpower all this year. And let me tell you a little bit about how that happened. I have been involved in Republican politics here in Henderson County for a long time. I've been in just about every post in the Republican Party that we have. But, at the start of this year, I began to back out of politics. And why did I do that? I was backing out of politics because I was so disgusted, not just with politics in the United States, but with my party.
Here, here.
Somebody agrees with me. So, here I am backing out and a friend of mine says, "Maybe before you do that, there is a gentleman that you need to talk to, think about, and you may want to stay involved to some extent." So, I met Karl Mumpower. And I have stayed involved to some extent. Not as much as I would like to, because I do have some health problems going on right now, and some family problems, and that type of thing. But, as much as I can, I'm helping Karl. And I'm helping Karl because we need a new type of politician in Washington. One with integrity, one who tells the truth, one who sticks to his guns even though it makes some folks mad. And, we haven't had enough of that. I've just been angered recently. I've just been angered recently, today. As recent as today. We have an issue going on, on energy conservation. Now, we all know that if we're gonna do something about energy conservation, Congress needs to be in session. We all know that one person casts a deciding vote so that Congress is not in session. And that person was Heath Shuler. We all know that if we are gonna attack energy conservation meaningfully, that we have to do a multifaceted approach. You may not know that President Bush could have said that we have to have an emergency session of Congress, and Congress could not, would not have gone on a five-week vacation. They would have had to address the issue now. But instead, he kept silent. His people said, "It won't make any difference, so we're not going to do anything." That's what I'm talking about when I say I'm unhappy with my own party. Now, it goes further than that. When they come back, you're probably going to hear about a compromise. You're gonna hear about the gang of ten. Five Democrats, five Republicans, who have put their heads together while on vacation, and they've come up with a compromise. However, that compromise is gonna give you eighty-four billion dollars in new taxes on oil companies. It's gonna keep the offshore drilling out of the equation. And it's going to keep anybody from ever drilling in the Arctic National Wildlife Refuge. Is that a multifaceted approach, or not? Now, any of you who've read Newt Gingrich's book recently, you know, about change, understand that there's a multiple point plan that would work for energy conservation, for energy production, and to solve the energy problem in the United States. But, I'm not confident that we're moving in that direction, even within our own party. We need to get folks in Washington who are not afraid to be different. We need to get folks in Washington who will take a tough stand and stick to it. We need to get folks in Washington who are not afraid to be unpopular. And I believe that that man is Karl Mumpower, and I now turn this over to him.
It's an honor to have someone like Erv Hendricks be behind you. I've not made it easy on him. I've put him through some wear and tear. It's kinda like playing golf on a thunderstormy day. You don't know whether to go back into the clubhouse, or stand under a tree, or keep on going, or what. But Erv has stood with me, and I'm grateful for that. It's people like this gentleman that put a little wind under your wings and help you realize you cannot betray your mission when you betray good folks like him. And there are a bunch of good folks like him here tonight. Thank you all for being here. There's lots of things you could be doing. You could be watching, gentlemen, you could be watching the ladies volleyball in China. Anybody watch that? Yeah, yeah, yes. My wife came to me yesterday and said, "Girls volleyball is coming on, don't you wanna come and watch this?" I thought that was very nice of her. The Olympics are good this year, it's fun to watch. It's been a little different than maybe some others anticipated, with all the political shenanigans and so forth. I'm grateful that you're here. How's that for time? Let's see how we punch this thing. My apologies. I'm grateful that all of you are here, very thoughtful of you. We're gonna have a fast evening. I'm not going to bore you, and I know you won't bore me. As I speak, and I'm going to talk about twenty minutes about a number of things, I'd appreciate it if you'd think about questions. Feel free to put me on the spot, anything personal, professional, political, I don't care. Someone said earlier, "Well, I wanna ask you a soft question about something, do you mind?" And I said, "No, please feel free to ask me any question, hard or otherwise." That just makes me quicker on my feet, makes me think, makes me smarter, and gives you all an opportunity to see whether I'm the real thing or not. My name is Karl Mumpower, I'm a city councilman in Asheville. I'm the 6'1" guy, you may have heard of me. I'm not 6'1" just because I'm stubborn. Can you hear me okay in the back, by the way? I'm not 6'1" just because I'm stubborn or like to say no. They call me Dr. No over there, I'm a psychologist by profession. I'd be tickled to death to be over here in Henderson County where your entire commission is Republican, I wouldn't know how to act. I'd just sit there and be paralyzed. It's not that way over in Asheville. I live in what is arguably one of the most liberal cities in North Carolina, not the most liberal city. And I don't mean that in a mean-spirited way. I love Asheville, but I'm a conservative, and I stand for conservative values, and I do that very consistently. I made up my mind when I ran first time for city council in 2001, and I did it under some shaky knees. I made up my mind that when I did that, I would stand for something, whether I got re-elected or not, whether people liked me or not. And I've been, I like to believe, I've been very consistent at that. I was re-elected in Asheville. I actually was elected by the council, that same liberal council, as their vice mayor, which is somewhat unique. I was grateful for that opportunity for two years, took full advantage of it, the leadership opportunities. I'm a father, grandfather, husband, I'm a veteran, Vietnam veteran. I volunteered for Vietnam, I volunteered for the service the week I got out of high school, which was Owen High School in Blackmail. I volunteered for Vietnam as soon as I could get through the schooling. Spent about a year there, I was nothing special, had a mixture of exposures. It left a lump in my throat, though, it had an effect on me. Went to school after that, and as quickly as I could, and then came back and started a practice, a therapy practice, and have continued to do that ever since then. I enjoy what I do. I'm also a Christian. I'm not a political Christian. You would think that every politician in America almost was a devout Baptist before the election. And then after the election, we immediately start getting into various mischief and trouble that these people feeling betrayed. I'm an authentic Christian, I have to be. I can't do this walking alone. I feel like I have to have higher authority guiding and leading. I happen to believe as a psychologist that if all of us, I don't know, I wouldn't tell anybody which authority to pick, that's up to them, but if all of us had that filter, we might eliminate my job, frankly. So, I try to practice what I preach. So, that's a little bit of who I am. I'd like to talk about what I wanna do, and then I'm gonna talk about why I'm doing it. And then I'm gonna talk about how I'm gonna do it. Hush, and then I'm gonna come out here on this hot seat and give you all a chance to ask questions and stir the pot a little bit with me. In terms of what I want to do, high on my list, and I hate to ask somebody, but I had an order of french fries on the way over here, is a cup of water, possibly. Erv, you're the guy that's usually running that kitchen when I'm here.
That's one of the other things I do.
I'd like to talk about what I want to do. Number one on my list, and it's what I do in Asheville a lot, is fight waste and government corruption. And both are something that touch all of us. I don't care if you're a liberal, a Democrat, and I know we have a mixture here, and I'm grateful for all of you, regardless of your background, for being willing to hear my message and mission. But, fight waste and government corruption, which is something that touches all of us, I don't care who you are. And I do that pretty tenaciously. I grew up in a background where I had a good bit of exposure to bullies, and I never liked bullies. And that's sort of stuck with me. I don't like bullies or people that take advantage of other people. And that's what waste does, and that's what... Thank you so much. Thank you for putting ice in it. Gosh, that's great, thank you. So, that's a real important thing to me. A second thing is I'm what you call an independent Republican. And most folks sort of wrinkle their nose a little bit at that. What is an independent Republican? Well, I'm not trying to be cute, not trying to catch everybody, you know, Republicans and independents. What I'm saying by that is I am a Republican through and through. I am dedicated to the Republican Party and the Republican Party's principles, but I am independent of the Republican Party power structure, very intentionally, persistently, and actively. Why? Because I don't need their help? No. Because I don't need their money? No. Because they're all bad guys or bad ladies? No. But because I believe the Republican Party structure has betrayed their promises to the American people. And I'm sorry, but I'm not wanting to be a part of that. I'm not willing to be a part of that. I think it's very important that we reform the Republican Party. I have a keen interest in the 11th district being the, taking the leadership role in the country, in reforming what I call, what is called, the conservative reform movement. Now, why the conservative reform movement? Because that's really what the Republican Party's principles are about. And we'll share some of those with you in just a moment. Thank you all for being here. So, that's number two. Number three is to look out for our children and grandchildren. It is tragic what we're doing to the younger generation. Anybody under forty should be a devout conservative at this point in time, because the me generation, the baby boomers, and other generations, I believe in many ways are robbing their future. When you pass on a ten trillion dollar national debt to your children, when you pass on sixty, and some people say as much as ninety trillion dollars of promises to your children and grandchildren, that's wrong. We're the first generation in the history of America that's at risk for leaving our children with less or less opportunity. And that word can be means more than the material side of the equation. Less opportunity than was left for us, and I believe that's wrong. One of the things that I admire Congressman Taylor for so much, he served sixteen years. And any of you who've been in politics and see several folks who are or have been, thank you for your service. Anybody that's done it knows it's really tough. It's not easy. I had a good friend the other day say to me, "You know, the best thing in the world that can happen to you is you lose. You are my friend, and I care for you, and I pray every day you will lose, your life will be easier." My wife gets together with him for a prayer meeting. She's a great servant. But, it's a responsibility, not a prize, although some people unfortunately treat it that way. I don't. I've never, I can't say I've ever had a whole lot of fun serving on Asheville City Council. It's a burden that I'm proud of, I'm honored to have it, but if you treat it seriously, it's a little bit of a load to carry. Well, Congressman Taylor carried that load for sixteen years. And one of the things that he did best, I disagree with him on a thing or two, but one that I admire him for tremendously is his concept of constituent service. His staff worked themselves to death, and it didn't make any difference who went in their office. If you had money in your pocket, if you had a hole in your pocket, if you had tobacco in your pocket, I think they did a pretty good job of trying to treat everybody the same. Nothing's perfect, but I know that over the course of my life, anytime I reached over there for one thing or the other, either as a city councilman or one time, just as an individual citizen, I got a sense, well, they're trying to help you. Help me get through the mazes. Most people don't know that. The most important job in Congress is not in Washington. The most important job of a congressman is right here at home, providing constituent service, helping, which basically means helping people through the bureaucracies and the mazes of the federal government. And believe me, it needs to be done, whether it's veteran services. Right now, in Greenville, South Carolina, my understanding is the social security disability backlog is nine thousand people for this district. Nine thousand people. Now, let's assume for a moment that a third of those people may be trying to take advantage of the system. Don't know that, but I'll bet you like you would, there are a number of people who are. That still leaves six thousand people who are waiting, who have promises made to them, who are hanging out there in the wind. That, to me, is fairly typical of the federal government, which is great at spending other people's money, great at making new rules and regulations, poor at execution. That's something we need to fight, something we need to do something about. Well, constituent services tops on my list, or high on my list. And then the final thing I'd say to you, I keep mentioning this word, principle, and I get a lot of grief for that. The papers make fun of me, my competitors, or those I've run against have made fun of me, like that's my ego saying I'm better than everybody. I wish I enjoyed that kind of confidence. I don't feel that way. I just have a set of principles that I hold on too tightly, and I do it through the pain, because it's not easy to, frankly, there's a reason not many of us stand for something, because it's just doggone hard to stand for something. What do I stand for? What am I talking about when I talk about principles? I'm talking about the principles of the Republican Party. Which if you took the caption off the top of the paper and handed it out to every American, every person in the country, I bet you to say seventy-five-plus percent of the folks would agree with about everything on there and say, "Gosh, this makes sense, what's the big deal with this? This is just good, down-to-earth, common-sense leadership, a good common-sense leadership model." But, it's amazing how hard it is to hold to it, and I do. And I hope someone will ask me about this principles first after it stirred up so much controversy and conflict in the community. I'll share a little more about that. Kathy, would you mind? We have some copies, by the way, of those Republican principles, and I wanna thank Mike for my pace back there in the corner for running home and getting those. But, those are some of the things that I wanna do. Now, why do I wanna do it? Well, what I said earlier is one of the bigger reasons. I have, last time I was in this room, I had my grandson with me, and I had my son with me. And they mattered to me. And I imagine your children and grandchildren mattered to you. And as an adult, it's not just about me, it should be about them. And I think we're betraying. I think we're softening their future, we're blurring their future, and I'm uncomfortable with that, and I think that that's an important reason to try to run and make, affect some changes. I have a thing I call the American success equation. Liberty, opportunity, and responsibility. I'm not sure it's terribly original, but when I look back at our history, that's the formula I see for our success. That is what has, that's what led France to put Lady Liberty, the Statue of Liberty, in the New York Harbor, their admiration for our model of liberty, opportunity, and responsibility as an equation. But I'm afraid that our culture is steering away from those words in one form, fashion, or the other. Liberty is eroding day by day, and one of the greatest erosions is occurring at the local level, at the city and county level. We're not paying attention to that. We look up toward Capitol Hill, we ought to be looking out our back door, because we're just rules and regulations after rule and regulation. And what bothers me so much about that is we're real good at making them, we're not good at enforcing them. And that's the worst of all worlds. And by the way, there's a white pickup truck out there with a lights on it. Nissan pickup. If somebody did that on purpose, I appreciate the spotlight. Anybody have a white pickup? Would anybody mind scooting over to the bridge players and let them know they might appreciate it? And then ask them to join us? I believe that equation is crucial to our future, and we're swapping it for socialism. And when I use that word on Asheville City Council, and I do fairly frequently, they laugh at me and give me a hard time, and accuse me of, you know, being derogatory, and someone said, "I'm sorry, this is a socialistic policy, I can't support it." And they said, "Well, suppose I told you you were a Nazi?" I said, "Well, you can call me whatever you want to, it wouldn't be accurate." But, my use of the term "socialistic" is accurate, because all that is basically is reaching in one pocket to rob Peter, so you can put it in another pocket of Paul's. The problem with that is the person making the selection, there are a lot of problems with it, but it's a form of robbery, but it's the person making the choices. I have trouble with that, because I don't think we're good at it. I think we start playing to our own selfish interests. And that's the way America is being run now. I call it the Buy America Plan. Not buy America, but buy America. My opponent has collected roughly three million dollars so far in contributions. Last time I looked, I think we had twenty-six dollars of my staff here. I think we got about three thousand or something like that. But it's really wonderful, because, and I say this with total sincerity, anything we've needed to do, we've been able to do. One way or the other, we figured out a way to do it. Now, my competitor will be pulling in some shining personalities, and he'll be buying lots of TV ads, and he'll do everything he can to avoid debate with me. And so, he may buy this election, but we've been able to do everything we want to do, and certainly everything I've had the time and energy to do. And we've been everywhere. You wouldn't know that here in Henderson County, but we're all over the place. This is the third of our town hall meetings, and we've got about three weeks for the next so many weeks, and then we're gonna turn right around and find some creative ways to debate Heath Shuler, whether he necessarily participates or not. Don't tell him. Don't tell him, I said. Keep that secret. The other thing about the "why" is if you don't have a party of principles, then people will naturally go toward the party of least principle. If we throw you in prison, you're gonna wanna hang out with the weakest guy in the prison, or you're gonna wanna hang out with Bruno, who can protect you. For those of you who are Democrats, I apologize, but I'm gonna say it out loud, I believe the Democrats have developed a policy. I used to be a Democrat. As Ronald Reagan said, "I didn't leave my party, my party left me." He wouldn't realize that the Republican Party would do the same thing down the road, and that's what's happened. But I'm afraid the Democrat Party has become increasingly attached to the concept of entitlement and promise and spending other people's money. I don't think they're going to be able to get back from that. I think they're too dedicated to it, they've made too many promises. I think that party, and what do I know, but I think that party's lost. I do not believe that about the Republican Party. However, if you're a businessman, and you have an affair with somebody, people are gonna be disappointed in you, they're gonna be frustrated with you. But if you're a minister, and you have an affair with your choir director, people are gonna feel a deep sense of betrayal and hurt. And that's what's happened to the Republican Party. Because we did hold up our hand and say, "We stand for something. We stand for small government, being careful with other people's money." Big people, small government, protecting the country. Those are the three that most of our principles fall around. And we said, "We're gonna be about this," and we gave our word. And then during the time, the six years that we had control of the House and sent in the presidency, we violated really, in my view, all of those. You might say, "Well, how did we not protect the country? We went to war and did a lot of things." When you let, during that period of time, since we had total power, there's an estimated ten, eight to ten million people, additional people, who have illegally crossed our borders, you are not protecting America. I hope someone will ask me a question about illegal immigration, because I have very strong feelings about that. So, I think we need to get back to our principles. And I'm willing to take the heat and take the pain, and I might go ahead and say real quickly, share real quickly, that's why I started this thing called Principles First, the Principles First campaign. I'm happy to say Henderson County signed on with that. The Henderson County Republican Party Executive Committee signed on. Now, a week later, they got mad at me and disavowed my campaign, but they never pulled away from Principles First, so I'll take what I can get. We've had three counties that say, "You're a stinkapoo, and we don't want anything to do with you." Pope County, we were there Monday night for a first town hall meeting, I like to go where it's toughest. Then, we, in Jackson County, and in Henderson County, essentially disavowed our campaign. You might say, "What does that mean?" They said, "Well, we're just not gonna work with you. We think you're a stinkapoo, and we don't understand what you're trying to do here," and so forth. I'm not mad. Anytime you try to affect change, you're gonna get pushed back. If I regret anything, it's that in none of those good cases, if I had the opportunity to meet with those executive committees and say, "Here's what I'm about, here's what I'm asking," they'd make a decision without that opportunity. That's probably not the best choice. I have faith that we will get a couple of those, maybe all of those, back before the election. But the thing that matters most to me are not the people that I've lost, but the eleven counties that said, "We're on board, a hundred percent." And I heard from two more today, a verbal, "Yes, we're behind you too." I wanna hold off until I get that in a more confirmed fashion, but we have eleven counties now that have said, "We're behind you on the two main things you ask," which are, number one, we're reaffirming our commitment to the Republican Party's core principles, and number two, we're gonna develop our own process. I'm not a control freak, I don't wanna tell how folks how to do this. We're gonna develop our own process for holding local, state, and national elected Republicans accountable to those principles. Nothing more than that. That doesn't mean we're gonna send a hitman after somebody, because they don't vote like we want them to. It simply means, under most circumstances, we're gonna hold up our hand in Clay County, in Buncombe County, in Madison County, wherever it is, if we see a vote that we think, like Farm Bill, which is a very core claim, and it's about, about ten percent of it's about medium and small farmers. The rest of it is about other kinds of entitlements and nonsense, as far as I'm concerned, earmarks. Where Madison County might write a letter to one of the elected officials who voted for that, you know, we have two senators and Heath Shuler who voted to, in North Carolina, voted to override the president's veto on that, and they might send a letter up and say, "Listen, we just wanted to let you know, we were concerned about that vote. We thought that it stepped pretty far away from principle number six and eight on our list, and we wanted to let you know our concern." That's enough, trust me. I'm a politician, I know. If people are paying attention and shining a light on it, that creates unconscious accountability in folks. And that's all I ask, those two things. We have eleven counties on board, we may have thirteen, I won't promise that. Let's keep that eleven figure until I get that confirmed. But those are the folks that matter most for me, most to me. Those are the people that I like to reach for what's good and working and positive, and those people are behind me, and I'm grateful for it. And the message it sends, now whether we'll be able to get that message out or not, I don't know. I'm not in charge of that, the good Lord is, but I'm gonna try hard. The message that I'm trying to get established is that the 11th district of western North Carolina stands for something, that you can count on this, that we, when we say we're about those Republican principles, we are. We're taking the lead role in the conservative reform movement, and we're not gonna let go of it. And I promise you, if I get into office, and I think I've pretty well demonstrated that, I'm tenacious. I'm not gonna say... I'm not going to say, "Okay, well, I got elected now, and I got what I want, and you folks have a good time." That game worked, I got selected. I will not do that. I think that's a betrayal, I think it's insincere. I'm more concerned about those principles and bringing them back to life than getting elected. Now, I think they go together. I think they're one and the same. So that's why, and real quickly, how? Uniquely, if a traditional campaign would have won, Congressman Taylor would be standing before you instead of me. If a traditional campaign, my friend, and I consider him my friend, we spent a lot of quality time together, Spence Campbell would have won. He outspent me $250,000 to $50,000, and we still won. A traditional campaign will not win back the 11th district seat. Why? For just the reason we mentioned. In North Carolina, in the most recent statistics, 47% of the new registrants in the state registered Democrat, 43% registered independent. What does that leave for Republicans? We have a math major here. 10% of the new registrants in North Carolina are Republican. What does that tell us? People are discouraged. They don't believe us. But it is not that we're becoming more liberal. Don't believe that for a minute. Now, I'm not a political pundit, I don't know everything, but I do know this. I know it as a psychologist, I know it as an adult. That as times get tougher, people get more conservative. And times are tougher, people are afraid. They're afraid of our inability to solve problems, they're afraid of our economy, they're afraid of our foreign entanglements, they're afraid of this world, they're afraid of a lot of things. And when people get afraid, they become more conservative. But they don't trust the Republican Party to be conservative. I'm here to say that I'm real. I am real, and I will not bend. I will take whatever amount of heat I have to, to stay that course. I have done it for seven years on Ashville City Council, and trust me, it's been painful. I've asked myself many times, "Lord, why in the world did you get me reelected? Why in the world do you want me to keep doing this?" I come home after those city councils, and my wife looks at me and wants to start crying when she sees what I look like, battered and bruised. She can tell from the look in my eyes. But you don't, you build steel in a hot environment, you build resolve in a hot environment, and that's, I guess, been what that's all about. So, I'm not taking any PAC money, a unique campaign, no union money, no special interest money, not even any party money. People say, "Why aren't you taking party money?" Because you need to be consistent. I do not want to participate in that Buy America Plan. My colleague that I'm running against has raised about $3 million, 95% of that, if you look at it, you count that million and a half that he's got from the Democrat Party is coming from out of the district. Do you think businesses and Nancy Pelosi, who sent him $28,000 from her PAC individual pocketbook, do you think these people do that because they're good guys and good ladies? Do you think they have, there are no strings attached to that money? Do not believe it for a minute. That's what's hap, that's one of the reasons that Congress is so ineffective, because it's about an entanglement of special interests, instead of the American dream and the American success equation that I reference. Well, I'm not going to do that. I have a choice, participate or not. That's my own version of campaign finance reform. Believe me, I've caught a lot of grief for it. When I look at my bank account, I think, "Lord, did I do the right thing?" I know I did the right thing. I could not beat Heath Shuler with money, I'm going to beat him with principles, or I'm not going to beat him at all. But like I say, it's really wonderful at work, because so far, and we've had a very active campaign. I'm in a lot of places doing a lot of things. We've had the money to do, the money or the volunteer help, to do whatever we needed to do. And I can't tell you how grateful from that. We have no hired staff, no hired staff. I don't want any consultants from Washington, and I get two or three calls a week telling me they can do this and they can do that, I don't believe it, they just play the game and make money off of it. I don't want them. I'd rather have an Irv Hendricks offering his opinion occasionally to me, or some of you all, or this opportunity to speak to people, or sit down with people that are volunteers and care about the future of America. I'd rather have that kind of sincerity any day of the world, any day in the world, than someone who's a professional politician. Look what that political, top professional system has created. It's not, it's not real. So Principles First is my party reform system. I mentioned that I want campaign finance reform. Well, Principles First is my effort to reform the party. I'm also not going to take the overly, and I'm almost done, by the way. I'm also not going to take the overly generous retirement plan up there. They buy you off. They buy you off with a retirement plan, just a little thing that's overly generous, I'm not going to take that until we fix Social Security solvency. I'm not going to take pay raises until we've got the economy where it ought to be. I'm not going to take the health care plan, which is overly generous as well, until we fix the health care system in America. I want the worst office they've got. I'll write Nancy Pelosi to that effect, I mean that. I'm elected, I want the worst office you've got up here, don't give me the best one. And don't worry about what committees you put me on, because I really don't care. If you know how, first off, the committees don't accomplish anything but agitate and quivicate. Secondly, it's a power deal. If you want to get a committee appointment, especially a chairmanship, what do you have to do? Swap your principles. And if you ever wondered, "Why did we lose so many politicians? These, we all know good guys that become corrupt guys and ladies. Why is that?" Because we start that game of swapping power, excuse me, principles for power. And once you start down that slide, I just don't think it's possible to stop. The gentleman in Alaska, the senator in Alaska, took $250,000, as near as they can tell, I know this for a fact. You know, this is a conservative Republican with quite a, quite a history, quite a reputation. I can't believe he went in there, his longest-serving senator, I believe, we have now. I can't believe he went in there with greedy hands. But something happened to him. Something happened to him to the point, I don't even think he believes he's guilty. And you've seen that game played out, too. You've seen it with, on the Democrat side of the equation, which is the same thing as a belief that you have a responsibility to others besides yourself. We all know what it's like to get corrupted, and you step on our old shoelaces and so forth, but why, in Washington, it's an organized effort. I think it encourages you to corruption. You know, they say, the Bible says, "The devil comes with a smiling face." He doesn't have two horns popping over his head. And all those things I just mentioned are designed to suck you in, get you to swap your principles for power. I'm not going to play that game. And now, people say, "Well, how are you going to make a difference up there?" Well, you do not. That old thing about you've got to go along to get along is wrong. If you have the courage to try to be a decent person, try to stand up for what's right. Boy, time goes by, doesn't it? That clock is wrong, is it, or has it? It's not, it's not wrong, I'm wrong.
Well, that clock's right.
Yes, I apologize. If you have the courage to stand up for what is right, to stand for something, to illuminate the truth, and to not bend in the wind, you can affect tremendous change. I know it, I've done it on Ashville City Council. Somebody sent me a question the other day, "What have you done on City Council?" And I rattled off, you know, I started the, I built 50 top of stop, bus stops, with volunteer money, and I've built a lot of them myself, but started the drug commission. We've got the toughest drug interdiction system in the state, maybe the country, and done a bunch of things. But the biggest thing I did was hold the line on conservative values to the point that we do a lot of conservative things on Ashville's ultra-liberal City Council. Have you heard, has your city, has your city council here in Henderson County this year that they say, "Absolutely, we are going to hold the line on taxes, we're going to maintain our savings account, we're going to eliminate our open-air drug market, we're going to make Ashville the safest city in America." Those aren't conservative goals, or, excuse me, liberal goals, those are conservative goals. But by standing firm, you can affect change. I've learned in seven years on Ashville City Council that you don't have to go along. As a matter of fact, if you start going along, you lose your way. If you let go of those principles, you lose your way, and I'm not going to do that. That's a little bit more on the how. I have three filters. A personal filter, and I won't tell anybody else what to do, a personal filter is the Bible. I believe it's an inspired document, haven't found anything in it yet, and you can always, you can, as a person with an education, I know you can, you can do with words what you can do with statistics, you can manipulate them, but I haven't found any core concepts in the Bible that I could disagree with, even though man's had an opportunity to twist and mess around with. And that's one of my filters. The second is the Constitution. Stuck one in my pocket, have one in my pocket now. Please come in. Come on in. Come on in, please, please, go ahead. If you're looking for bridge, it doesn't start until we finish. There are plenty of bridges here, I think. And I saw, boy, when we first got started, I saw a drum set come in, scared me. I even thought Heath would hire a drummer to sit down and love me. The second is the Constitution. I stuck a copy in my pocket, I've gone through a bunch of them, given away, lost them, but I kept one with me. I think that's an inspired document, too. And I'm concerned, because the more you ignore it, the more irrelevant it becomes, and Congress ignores it, I believe the president is guilty of ignoring it. If you heard me say, "I would, as a citizen, support the impeachment of the President of the United States," which made a bunch of people in this man, this room mad, and out there mad, I said it, I said it out loud, "Now, he's going to be gone if I get elected." What in the world was I doing? You know, I just pulled that one out of the hat. He promised to put 6,000 National Guard troops on the border to protect our borders. Instead, he put 3,000, and then he pulled those 3,000, and that was the trigger point for me. The President of the United States, like Congress, takes an oath of office. That's not a ceremony up there, folks, it's an oath of office, it's a commitment. And if you ignore the Constitution, which is basically what that oath of office is about, then it becomes irrelevant. If you don't impeach somebody on that, what are you impeaching them on? I don't want him impeached, I just want people to start being accountable. I think that's terribly important. My third filter is those principles that I shared with you. They're very important to me, they matter, they're what I stand for. Why do I need that? If you don't have a plan, if you don't have a direction to keep you on track, it's like the old country song, "If you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything." I think that's crucial. Finally, I'll say this to you, and that's, by the way, those three filters are about reforming me. It's about keeping me on the right track, making, making sure that 25 years from now, or whatever it is, 10 years, you don't read about me in the paper, taking payoffs or doing other things that I shouldn't be doing. And finally, I'll say this to you. I'm dedicated to the mission of the founding fathers. That was a pretty wise bunch of folks. Nothing that's come since then has remotely, remotely compared to what they were able to create. Their voice needs to echo into the future of our children and grandchildren. And one of two things will happen in November. One congressman will buy a seat in Congress, or one congressman will earn a seat in Congress. And that's up to the good Lord and you folks. And I welcome your help in my effort to be on the right side. Thank you for that, that very validating kind applause, that was very, very nice. Thank you for being here, especially. So, who wants to open this up? Can you hear me okay in the background? Who wants to open this up? Somebody toss one out. Is it an easy one? Is it an easy one? I'm just kidding.
No, it's a hard one.
Good, jump right here.
Since we're going to be the minority in our own country by 2040, what are your plans for deporting 12 to 20 million people, like Hoover did and Eisenhower did in their day?
Okay, they, they had a little easier job of it. I think really, if I remember correctly, Eisenhower deported about 2.5 million, can anybody correct me on that?
We bet 13, but go ahead.
He followed Hoover's...
I think, I think that actually was a mistake, I've seen the same figure, I think actually it was 2.5. That's a lot of people back then. We're not going to do that today, we have 15, some people say 20 million, don't think they really know illegal immigrants in this country. It's not a matter of hiring that many buses and taking them to the border, that won't work. We're going to do it the way it was done in Ashville, North Carolina, day before yesterday. Somebody called me from Mills Manufacturing, it's really been about three months ago, and said, "I work here, please don't tell anybody who I am, but most of the people here speak some version of Latin, and they, they all say they're illegal." Not all, but almost all of them freely acknowledge they're illegal, and they use fake ID to work here. Mills Manufacturing makes the parachutes, most of the parachutes for America's military. In Vietnam, I'll never forget it, to this day, I flipped over a parachute, and for some reason, I think I was killing time, and looked at it, this one I was going to put on, and it was made in Ashville, North Carolina, where I was from. That was kind of a moving moment, it's burned into my brain. Well, Mills Manufacturing, little did I know, 35 years later, I'd be calling ICE and saying, "Hey, we have an inside person that might help us get to an issue here." And I've been calling ICE about one company after the other, including companies here in Henderson County, turning them in every chance I get, including the city of Ashville. Most of the people rebuilding their water system do not speak English. Most of the people building the county's parking garage do not speak English. You might say, "Well, what's, what's wrong with that?" Well, statistically, the people who don't speak English in this country, 40 to 70%, frankly, I think it's much higher than that, are illegal, are illegal, using false documentation. I'm sorry, that's wrong. If you do not have borders, if you do not have borders, you cannot protect your country. My wife is a nurse, she says, "When you cut yourself, you have a portal for infection." Our skin is a border. We have a large portal for infection in America. Has nothing to do with Latinos, it's not a racial issue, it's a legal or illegal issue. Now, what's the answer? Do we throw all these folks in jail? No. Do we bust them all to the border? No. What we do is go after the people who provide the jobs and the money that create the attraction, the business community, the people who sidestep the laws, and I'm sorry, when one-third of your, your working population is arrested, and you say that you've played it straight all the way down the line, something's missing in that equation. You may not be able to use e-Verify for old employees, but you can get, you can verify Social Security numbers. There's a lot of things you can do if you want to, and you have the will to do it. And I'm delighted, I don't know, I've got all kinds of folks mad at me, the company says they're furious with me, I'm delighted to have had some small part in helping that occur. And that's how we're going to do it. We don't have to invent a bunch of new laws, we have to enforce the laws we have now. That's, that's what I call a decoy game, when everybody says, "Oh, no, we can't bust people, and we can't, we have to have all these new laws." What that leads to is paralysis. Name a problem that Washington has solved in the past 10 years, a major problem, a major issue, I don't think you can come up with one. And so, when you say, "We've got to have this new laws and fix this problem before we can enforce it," enforce it, what that means is we do nothing. And I'm reminded of Ernest Hemingway's quote, "Never mistake motion for action." And all this call for new law and stuff like that is motion. Start enforcing your law that you have on the books now, demonstrate that you have a persistent willingness, desire, and system to do so, then make the law better. That's what you should do, you should make the laws better, you can always do that. But first, you've got to start with enforcement, and you have to go to the employers to do that. You don't have to put them in jail, start fining them. I feel very, it's the greatest law-breaking scheme in America's history, and is supported by my party, the Republican Party, just as much as it is the Democrat Party, and that's wrong. And I want to say something here, if I may, just a second. In America today, that affects the wage level and stops our poor folks from reaching higher for some of that hope that we talked about earlier. In America today, we have a 30% dropout rate with our students on average, 50% for minorities, and that's the physical dropout rate, that doesn't count the mental dropout rate, which is probably even higher or as high. That's the kids that come out of school and graduate but don't have the skills and talents to compete in a tough, competitive, and sometimes scary world. That's wrong. And part of the reason that's not happening is we don't have the incentive in this country to get urgent about those figures. Why? We don't need those children. We have, we have people to take those jobs. I mean, the Latins coming across the border are hard-working folks, for the most part. And so, we don't need our young people, and we're not bridging them, and that's wrong. There's a big difference. Most of us in this room, we knew people dropped out in high school. It was different 30 years, or 20, even 20 years, 40 years ago than it is now. It's a much more difficult, competitive world. I believe that's one of the problems with illegal immigration, we're betraying our children. I'm not okay with that. Now, I want to be fair to this gentleman and this gentleman. Yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mumpower, if you are elected to Congress, would there be a very good way to communicate what's going on from your office? In other words, you would tell us what you're doing?
Well, I can tell you what it won't be, for starters. It won't be a glossy publication that I send out three or four times a year.
It could be on the internet.
It won't be a glossy publication that I send out. How many people got, have received one of Congressman Schumer, Representative Schumer's mailouts? I think this is the third or fourth one this year. They're very expensive. That's a publicly financed campaign tool. I think it's wrong. I'll just make a pledge to you. I will not spend money on mass mailings. Not in the 21st century. That's the media's job. I think we've got a few media folks here. That's the media's job, number one. And two, you can do it on the internet and reach a whole lot of people. I'm not going to waste money on snail mail to do that. I think it's wrong. I think there, to me, if you... I'm not going to, if I'm elected, I'm not going to set about creating a media image with the public when I'm elected. I'm going to go about trying to keep the public informed through the media. It's up to them as to what they do with that, but that will be my effort. Yes, sir, and then you'd be next, sir?
Back on the subject of immigration, would you agree that another inducement that needs to be addressed is the extremely lucrative, if you will, social services that are made available to illegals, such as education?
Yes, sir.
You know, the...
Yes, sir. That's one of the costs. We, by some estimates, we spend more providing services to illegal aliens in this country than we do on the war in Iraq, and the war in Iraq is extraordinarily expensive. In Asheville, North Carolina, it costs $15,000 to educate one student. Somebody has to pay for that. And I'm sorry, even if you're in a legal job, payroll taxes and other taxes don't begin to compensate for that $15,000. Social services, every agency, and I assume they say it here in Henderson County, too. "Oh, no, we don't provide services to illegal immigrants." But that's just not true. All you have to do is spend $25 for a fake document. Nobody checks those documents. And I had a guy told me yesterday that, said he asked a coworker, he pulled out this weird-looking social security card. It's on paint cardboard paper. And he said to this guy, he said, "Is this document real?" It was a Latino. And he says, "Yes, it's real. I paid $20 for it." Well, you take that $20 ID into the food stamp office. You don't have to take anything into the hospital emergency room. Extraordinarily expensive services, the health department and other things, and you can milk the system. Talk to those hospitals on the border down there about what they're doing about childbirth. What, how it's eating them up. Look at your own statistics, and this has nothing to do with racism. It has to do with the law. Look at your own statistics for your own hospital. The percentage of new births there. And do a little figuring and check it, and you'll see what that issue is. And I think it's concerning. There's no magic bucket of money in America. $10 trillion in debt. We have to have double-digit growth for forever, almost, to recapture that. You know how they're trying to, how they're trying to level the playing field? Printing more money. You wonder why we're having inflationary concerns, and that's a big one. They're printing more money. Yes, sir? Well, I better take, I'm sorry. Am I missing the order?
I think you said that I would be next.
Okay, sir. Yes, sir, you're next. And then these two gentlemen, and then we'll come to this gentleman.
I'm one of the 43% of registered independents. And one of the things that I would like to know is what your position would be on the Global Poverty Act? The Global Poverty Act passed the House of Representatives, was voted for by Heath Shuler. I communicated with his office, tried to get an answer. I didn't get an answer that directly. And for what it's worth, I'm sure you know this, but it would pledge 7/10 of 1% of our gross national product in addition to our normal foreign aid to be given to the United Nations to administer a Global Poverty Act, which last year translated into $65 billion. What's your position?
Would you mind sending me an email on that little tidbit? I love that. I will, if I get to the debate, Heath, I will look forward to the opportunity to bring that up because I hadn't heard that he voted for that.
Oh, he voted for it, definitely.
Okay, I have a background in social work. I have a master's degree. I went to the most liberal social work school. It was called that at the time, University of Georgia, in the country. And they almost threw me out because I was so conservative. I finally had to hide, conceal my true identity. I put on a tie-dye T-shirt and managed to get through school. But I like to help people. I really like to help people. I mean, why else would you go to a social work school of all of those? Why else would you get a PhD in psychology and get licensed as a psychologist? Why don't you do that? I like to help people. But I don't, I'm not a big believer in welfare because it doesn't, the way it's set up, it really doesn't uplift people, it just subsists people. We create an underclass. But I definitely don't believe in earmarks, which are community welfare. I don't believe in bailouts, corporate bailouts, which are postponing the inevitable. That's corporate welfare. And I don't believe in international welfare. I believe we corrupt people with that, and that's a corruptive process. And I'll tell you what I do believe in, and I'm going to say it out loud. I don't care. How many folks to defend, I believe in America first. Every once or something happens like that airplane where the bottom popped out of it or something, and we decompress, and those little masks fall down, what does your little car tell mama to do with her infant on the seat? Put your mask on first, Mom. Because if you try to put it on your baby, you're going to go out pretty quickly. You may lose both of you. Put your mask on first, then take care of the child. That's what I mean by "America first." It's not, it's not only America. It's not an indifference to the world. It's just that I believe that we serve the world best by being a beacon of something that works, something good, something substantial, something normal that's worth fighting for. And that's why this thing of illegal immigration won't work. Historically, we've received about a quarter of a million dollars, a quarter of a million legal immigrants a year for most of our history. Now, we're absorbing a million legal a year and close to a million illegal, a million plus illegal a year. That's smothering America. It's like building a campfire and putting so much wood on it, you put out the fire. So, "America first." Not an indifference to the world because I believe we serve the world best by showing them a way that works. And I'm shocked the concept, but you can't. A theory of working. And they've been bleeding, you know, us. We support, what is it, a third of their budget? The further away the leadership is from the reality, the more unrealistic that leadership will be. And we need, the closer you, let me digress. Education, people, maybe somebody would ask me, "What do you think about education?" The federal government and the state government, the teachers' unions and attorneys and other bureaucrats have kidnapped our education system. It worked better. I believe in public education. We have, can you imagine how hard it is to homeschool a child? How many parents are willing to quit work, live off of one income because they, they're afraid of the corruption, corrupt forces that affect their child in public education? The sacrifices they make to homeschool their child, that should be a wake-up call to us that, "Hey, guys, the system is broken. We've got to take charge again here." Well, we can, as long as it's run in Washington, the state government, it's not going to happen. It used to be, when many of us were growing up, you had the teacher, you had the principal, you had the parents, you had the community, and the student. And they were the dominant forces in education. But now, you've got all those other people I mentioned in the deal, and they're shoving the... Teacher burnout? You talk to teachers. Do we have any teachers in here? If you talk to teachers and say, "What do you need? You need more money? What do you need? You need more recognition, more praise? What do you need?" And they'll say to you, "No, I need more control over my teaching environment. I'm asked to be responsible, but I have no authority. All I do all day long is have to keep up with rules and regs, and it's this constant parade of controls from all these forces. And I just feel like a robot that people are telling me to walk here and walk there." And that's wrong. We need to get education back to the local level. Same thing is true with the idea of the UN and turning over our resources to this big monopoly, government monopoly. I would be very much against that. And I'm so glad you told me because we hadn't picked up on that, that Heath voted for that. That's a classic example of what Heath does. He talks one thing here, he does another up there. I don't mean to be mean-spirited. I like the guy, but I'm going to beat him to death on his voting record. In the current Congress, he's voted with his Democrat colleagues 84.6% of the time. And I may have just messed up. It may be 86.4% of the time. It's one of those two. I think it might be 86.4% of the time. It's about a 2% difference. That's not a blue-dog Democrat. That's not an independent Democrat. That's not a conservative Democrat. That's a go-along-with-your-party Democrat. And when Nancy Pelosi's giving you $28,000, it's not because you're misbehaving.
You mentioned symptoms. Social Security, Medicare, poor school systems, et cetera, et cetera. And then you hit on the main issue, our culture, which has changed. In the times that I've been on this earth, it has changed quite a bit since the '40s, '50s, and '60s. Back in the '60s, a book was written, "None Dare Call It Treason," written by a John Birch Society member. In that book, he said, "What the Russians are going to do to us is bury us. Not by guns, but they're going to go to our news media, they're going to go to our educational system, and they were going to go to our judicial system and get us that way." Look at it today. Where is our news media? I threw away a list that I made of about up to 12 misspoken facts that the newspapers made. One of the last ones was Rutherford with his letters, you know. He was one of the few that they really got after and stringed it out. But there's innumerable ones of that nature that nobody's taken the news media to account. They have, we have a free press. They should print the facts. Your commentaries and your opinions should go over here and the facts over there. The twain should never intermelee. Our judicial system, we've got Roe versus Wade. That's a classic example. I happen to be against that. And as far as the educational system is concerned, we're doing an excellent job of dumbing our children. I went to high school in '43 through '47. Four years of English, four years of math, four years of science, four years of physical education, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think anybody nowadays will find a school system that does that. That high school had 5,000 students. As I was saying, that high school had 5,000 students. It was pretty crowded, and they still handled it well.
In fairness to the folks, where are we trying to go with the question?
Do you recognize that there is a cultural problem, and what are you going to do about it? And those three main systems is what I'm talking about.
Well, clearly, there is a cultural problem. And I think I spoke to it a little bit earlier when I said, just as a personal reflection as a psychologist, that if more of us were grounded in a spiritual value system, I don't think we'd be, need to see near as many people as do see people like me. I believe having a value system and standing for something is important. It comes back to that concept of principles. You don't have a culture unless you have some unifying principles. Material goods are not a foundation for a culture. Being just about me is not a foundation for a culture. And one of the bigger drifts that we've had in our country is adrift away from this concept of "we" to a concept of "me." Why is that? We're not enforcing our laws. We're not paying attention to values. We're not prioritizing them. We're becoming addicted. You know what the number-one addiction is in America? First time I ever saw Earth Hendrix, I brought up this question. The number-one addiction in America is not to food, or alcohol, or sex, or power, or money, or any of the things we think about. The number-one addiction in America is to feeling good. Feeling good. And when you make feeling good your driving motivation, whether it's as an individual, as a culture, you will lose your way. America needs to stand for something besides feeling good. And I'm sorry, but that's what the Democrat Party is about. It's promising people that they will do things for you that will make you feel good. Well, there's more to life than that. There are more accountabilities to this tough world. Tough, and I'm going to use the word "dangerous" world.
Given that our current tax system is opaque, unfair, confusing, what do you propose to do to help Americans to change the current tax code?
The problem with the tax code we have now is excessively, there are number problems, excessively complex. It encourages us, many of us, to break the law. It is rigged to indulge certain special interests. And to that extent, it is regressive. It undermines our culture. It robs that American success equation of liberty, opportunity, and responsibility I mentioned earlier. It attacks all three of those at one level or the other. Of the various, and I'm not saying this because you're here, of the various proposals to reform our tax code, the fair tax makes more sense than any of them. Now, there are things in there I don't like. I don't like. There's a few things that have a socialistic flavor to it that bother me. But there's nothing perfect. I think we have to tweak it and fine-tune it. But what I like about it, it creates a level playing field. It is basically a sales tax, if you will. Now, it's not going to be easy. Getting the, the people that benefit from the existing tax code will fight it tooth and nail, and there are a lot of them. But a consumption tax makes us all equal. It makes us the same, and I, at least in terms of our potentials. And I like that concept, so that's where I'd go with it. And I will fight for that because I think reforming our tax code is a big part of salvaging our future. Okay, this gentleman and then these two ladies? Yes, sir. And I'm sorry if I skipped somebody. Richard, I skipped you.
This is not a question. It's more of an observation. One thing, talking about the socialism, one thing you've got to remember about government before it can give you something, is first got to take it away from somebody else.
I like that concept. Yes, reach in one pocket. I love the idea of big people and small government. The bigger government gets, the smaller we get. And that's one of the things, the gentleman back in the back with the flag shirt on. I guess that's a sailor?
Someone.
That's one of the things that's happened to us. Where governments getting bigger and we're getting smaller. And I'm real frustrated with my party for participating in that. They let government get a lot bigger while they were in charge. These two ladies?
I just wonder how many people are aware, and especially you, and what your feelings are about it. I've been getting quite a few letters from conservative organizations that I donate to, and they're very, very concerned because President Bush went to Mexico and had a meeting with Canada's premier and Mexico's president. And I believe he's already signed a treaty, and they're already building a highway that will be 10 lanes wide through the state of Missouri. And Missouri's preparing for that. And our borders will be erased. It will be for commerce to go freely from Mexico to Canada. The leader, this is their plan. The leader for two years will be the Mexican president. He will be our president for two years. Then the American president for two years, then the Canadian president for two years. He'll have the authority, the Mexican president, to make laws to...
They do such a good job down there that I'm excited about having them be, provide the leadership for our country. And Canada has certainly been able to avoid socialism, so this is really an exciting concept. Thank you for sharing it. I think many of us have heard about this, and you hear some people say, "Oh, that's just nonsense, conspiracy theory." Other people say, "No, it's real and it's happening. It's just they're doing it behind their backs." I don't know. I know that it makes sense. They're two of our strongest, if not our strongest, trade partners. It makes sense to have good relationships with them. Honest relationships, free trade, not rigged trade, and not wide-open doors without those, not that portal for infection that I talked about. I think that's wrong. It would scare me to death. Before you have, before you open your borders, you have to have two things. You have to trust the people on the outside, and you've got to trust the people on the inside. Well, I have absolutely no trust for the Mexican government at all. When 15 million of your people run out of your country, that isn't because you're doing a good job. And frankly, I don't trust our government either. And I know that's not popular to say. I know a person reaching for a representative seat is supposed to be positive and spin the reality there, but I'm just not going to do that. I don't trust them. I go up there not with cynicism, but with skepticism. I know there are a lot of good people, but there are a lot of corrupt things up there, both in terms of elected officials and the administrative bureaucracy that's been created around them. And I want to go up there and disrupt it. Creating that kind of reality is a nightmare.
It's giving our country away.
Not going to do that.
Our independence.
Yes, sir.
It's a two-part question. One is...
I'm not sure I'm smart enough at this point to do more than what I'm doing.
One is that I think we've sold ourselves to China.
One is that I think we've sold ourselves to China, and the fact that the products that they're shipping over are killing our pets and making our kids sick, but apparently not their own pets and kids. And you didn't hear about any of their children getting sick from those toys made there. But the other question is, our community here...
They killed about twenty thousand of them in, in subpar schools, the earthquakes.
Yeah.
Did you hear about that tragedy? The, the most vulnerable, says something about a culture, the most vulnerable buildings they had during the earthquakes, or their own school buildings built by the bureaucrats.
And the other concern is the, the job market in western Carolina. You've got healthcare, government, and tourism, and that's it. And that just, with people not traveling now, the tourism is going down, so we're in a crunch.
You're gonna, you, you might have to, I feel so strong about the first part of your question, you might have to remind me about the second part, but China and Japan carry most of our international debt. If China, that would, it'd mess them up right now, because they're not quite strong enough and independent enough, but if China pulled the plug on the debt, called the debt, we would be in deep, deep trouble in this country. They have a, an excess of capital, and they're, they're spending it like crazy. My sister's over there right now, adopting a baby, and she says, "You won't believe it over here." Picture, picture, people picture a bunch of rice fields, but it's not like that over here, and they've been all over the country. She says, "It's scary what's going on over here. It worries me about our country, and everything over here that we see is new. It's like it's exploding. It worries me about our future." China is not our enemy, and I don't think we, we, we serve ourselves if we take the position they're our enemy, but they'll become our enemy if we don't maintain our own strength and equality. Part of the unfairness in that equation is we do not have fair trade, or honest trade, or free trade, we have rigged trade, and China pays absolutely no attention to our trade laws. Now, we make some mistakes. I don't like what we do with agriculture. I think we, we rig the deal against other countries. Corn-based ethanol is a goofy concept that's done great harm to Mexico, I think that's wrong. But we play it far straighter than most of our trade partners do, especially China. And I'll tell you, a classic example occurred either, I think it was night before last in the Olympics. This is China. This is how China does trade. This is, this is symbolic of, of, of that primary trade partner, and you go to Walmart, about everything you buy in there comes from Walmart. That's, that's really China's marketing arm these days. Here's China. Did you watch the ladies gymnastics? What'd you see?
Sixteen-year-olds.
Fifteen-year-olds.
Fourteen-year-olds.
You saw eleven and twelve, thirteen-year-olds masquerading, a six-year-old, you hear about the sixteen-year-old, excuse me, the one from, I told you. The, the, and I think it was either from China or Korea, they'd ask each year, I asked this young lady how old she was, and each of three years, she said she was sixteen. This is true. And they had, they had authentic passports, and said, "Does these children are this age?" That's a lie. Anybody there knows it's a lie. If China will do that just to win the Olympics, what do you think they're gonna do with money and other forms of power? They're not our enemy, but we need to pay attention, and we need to be a little stronger about, hey, what's wrong and what's not, what's right, and, and playing it straight. The second part of your question is, what are we gonna do for our economy here? It's scary. By the way, speaking of China, I talked to a gentleman in the industry here, it's been about two years ago. He said, "We can design a product, patent it, manufacture it, and it'll come back to this country from China in about three months, cheaper, and as good or better than we can do it." That's wrong. They totally ignore the patent laws, international trade rights, and so on and so forth. We have to, we're selling our future, we continue to go along with that. What do you do? You can't just fix western North Carolina, you have to fix the country, and there are a number of starting places. We talked about reforming the tax code, we talked about, or I will talk about, or we did talk about controlling government, and to me, that's job one. If they're out of control, nothing's gonna work. They've got too much power to leadership, too much leadership, too much responsibility, too much ability to gum up the works. We have to look closer at regulation. Now, I'm not someone that says no regulation. And, and I'm sorry, it doesn't, doesn't work that way, but by golly, if you get an elected body, a constitutionally-elected body, that makes decision about regulations, then they need to regulate what they say they're going to regulate. If you're gonna create a rule, do it, enforce it enthusiastically. One of the biggest problems we have is they create a hundred rules that they enforce in mediocre fashion and inconsistently. When ten rules enthusiastically enforced, we'd do a much better job. Illegal immigration is a classic example. "Well, we need more rules, we need new laws." No, we need to enforce the ones we have, and once we start enforcing them, then we can get to the business of making them better. But government doesn't do that. I'm concerned about, the, the, the economy to me is the number-one concern in America. And folks, I, I, I'm, I don't know about you all, but I'm, I'm, I see some darkness out there. I'm supposed to say, "Gosh, we're gonna be fine, and this is America, and we can get through anything." Well, we can get through anything. We got through a major depression, but it took about eleven years to do it. Took a whole war to get us through it. There, I'm concerned, there's some dark days, there's too much converging. We, we have, we've borrowed everything we can, we've inflated our money supply, we've, we've exported all our industry and jobs, we've corrupted our culture, we've done a lot of things that are all converging on us. Now, I, I'll be happy, I'm happy to tell you this, though. I've been all over this district, time after time after time. There are a whole lot more good people than bad people. There are a whole lot more "we" people than "me" people. We've let the "me" people take over, we've let the, the corrupt, and the selfish, and the self-serving, and the panderers take over. When things get tough, I think we can get back on our feet, but it's not gonna be, be painless. It's a, there's concern. And then there's energy policy. One of the, the biggest concerns we have, and you wanna look at what's hitting us right in the mouth right now, we're sending tons of money overseas to pay for, for fuel. And you know, everybody's complaining about that. Guys, we're excited, the gas is down to three seventy dollar gallon right now, which is twice as much as it was, or give or take, a few years back. We're not even talking about what's gonna happen to Granny when she's paying four or four-fifty a gallon for heating oil this winter. And, and, and the price of, of, of natural gas and propane goes out the roof like it's anticipated to do. And, and, and the man, the man I talked to yesterday, who run, runs an excavation company, who's, who's, it's just eating him up, the diesel fuel he's putting in there. We need a coherent energy policy, if anybody's curious about where I stand on that. All of the above. And I, 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 I'm not saying I coined the phrase, but I said it before, I heard, heard anybody else say it. All of the above, literally. Drill our best resources as soon as we can, as enthusiastically as we can. We know how to do it right. We don't have to rake and pillage the land to drill. It's a myth, it's wrong, the environmental extremists, they've kidnapped the argument. Now, I understand that, that it's, that, that other companies, other than American, may tap into that oil, but we create a, the more we're pulling out of our own, our own resources, out of our own soil, the more security we have, the more indirect impact we have on the world market. Now, that won't do it by itself, but it's a great beginning. Incent alternative energy. I'm having trouble with that. I'm probably the only guy in the room that had a solar collector in the seventies. I like alternative energy, but let's be smart about it. Corn-based ethanol is not smart, that was a payoff for farmers, and it was a rigged game, and it got people re-elected and, and messed up the country below us, the poorest people in the country below us, that's wrong. I, I was on the North Shore Road all day Sunday over in Swain County, rode over the, the grave thing. I didn't have any idea how catastrophic that, that move was. The TVA moved out six thousand people to build a lake, made all kinds of promises they haven't fulfilled. I won't go into detail on that. But they had power in that community before they had power in the county seat in Bryson City. They had paddle-wheel direct current. They had hydro power. The subway, or the trolley system in Asheville, North Carolina, was run off of hydro power back in the old days. Go after hydro, when? Go after whatever, as long as it makes economic sense. Paris, if you go to Paris, France, in the dead of winter, the storefronts will be open. Why? Because their energy supply is so cheap. Why? Because they're a model of nuclear energy. Nuclear is the future. And then finally, if I may, real quickly, I, I think, and we've gotta make use of our existing resources, we're sitting on a world of coal, and we can do that better and better. Look at the plant over in Asheville. Have you noticed the difference, those of you from around here? Have you noticed the difference? You notice what comes out of that chimney now?
Steam.
Steam, steam. It's not smoke, it's steam. It goes up a little bit and dissipates. You used to be able to see that thing thirty miles sometimes, and stream the smoke. We've come a long way, we know how to do it better. The thing that's gonna save our bacon is the sun. I think we're gonna learn to tap into that quicker and faster. We're not gonna have to wait a million years to create a lump of coal or a gallon of oil. That's gonna save our bacon. So do everything we can, and do it quickly, and make this one of those things that America does solve. This gentleman, and then you...
Even ethanol, which is a boondoggle, because it's in place, offers an opportunity. University of Illinois has developed mesanthus, which is a grass, can be grown on, on the same land as corn land, and...
Corn-based ethanol is...
Instead of using twenty-five percent of the acreage in the United States, it uses ten percent of the acreage in the United States. All it takes is some political will to say, "We're not gonna subsidize corn for ethanol, we are gonna subsidize mesanthus for, for ethanol."
And they've talked about everything, the grass, seaweed, all kinds of things. Between that and, and corn-based ethanol, it's the corn base that I would, I would call question to. Brazil, isn't it Brazil?
Brazil, yes, sir.
Yeah, and they're, they're, they're energy-independent, more or less. Okay, yes?
Well, this, this gentleman out here had to stand it, wait a long time.
It's young first, here.
You, you did. Sir, you're right, excuse me. Yes, sir.
Dr. Bunton, I'm proud. I'd just like to say that I am thoroughly disgusted with the state of politics nowadays, and it's gotten to a point that, that I'm not so much angry or even mad, that I'm just apathetic. Like, a lot of things that go on, I just don't care anymore. And I'm interested in your campaign, namely, 'cause congressmen and women are closer to the individual, and I like your stance on government. How, or what are your plans, and, and how do you perceive yourself making change and difference beyond our slice of, of the world, or our slice of the world?
I'm a, I'm a fighter. Not because I like fighting or enjoy it, and we'll give you an honest answer, not because I enjoy it, I'm scared a lot. People tell me it doesn't show, but I'm scared a lot. I'm anxious a lot, I'm nervous a lot. I think that helps keep me honest. I, I don't, I'm accused, you may have heard somebody call me an arrogant ass over here in this part of the world. I wish I had a few more arrogant moments that I could enjoy, I don't have those. But I do have a courage button, don't know altogether where it comes from, and I fight wrong. I fight my own party if they're wrong, I fight my colleagues if they're wrong, I work with them if they're wrong. The Citizen Times yesterday, when I was doing an interview with them to see who they're going to endorse, and you can guess who that is. They, they said, "Well, what, how, how are you at working with other people?" And I said, "Well, I was elected vice mayor by six liberals." I was, when I started the Vice Mayor's Drug Commission, the mayor wouldn't start one, so I started one. A vice, you ever heard of a Vice Mayor's Drug Commission? I started one. I called twenty-one senior leaders in Asheville, the head of the Chamber of Commerce, the hospital system, the County Commission, the sheriff, the chief of police, and said, "We need a senior policy body to start fighting back on our drug issue, would you join me?" And all, not one person said no, and they all came to the table. They came. I ran that for three years until I turned it over to somebody to run for Congress. I know how to work with people, but I'm not sure that's what we need now. I think we need people that are willing to get their hands dirty, to take some personal risk, to turn over some tables. Unfortunately, the Republican Party, illegal immigrant supporters and others have given me an opportunity to demonstrate, "I will do that, and I will do that." So when I go to Washington, I'm gonna find people I can work with, that, that share that value system, but I'm not gonna go there, I'm not gonna be well-liked. I'm not gonna have committee appointments and fancy opportunities and be invited to nice parties. I'm gonna go up there to create some misery and woe around the betrayal of our principles and the future of my children and grandchildren. I'm going up there to fight. Best answer I can, yes, ma'am? And we're, we're, we would need to, I'll take one more after this, and we gotta be fair to y'all and get you out of the door.
Well, it sort of goes along with what this gentleman is saying. I get all of the emails, all of the straight talk from Ron Paul, and except for his stance on the war, everything that Ron Paul says could be coming out of your mouth. You could go up there and do what Ron Paul is doing. He seems alone a lot, when you see all the Republicans standing up there on the stage in the beginning of the competition. He was always alone, they even might be turned away from him, and he was there in the middle. But he has gone back there for ten years. So I believe that you have that capability to go up there and be a standalone person, and make a difference, and go back again and again. So I'm gonna not ask the question.
Thank you for that, that's flattering. There are some things we disagree on, and personally, I, I see him as a principled man trying to fight back, that's, that's, I'm grateful for that. I, I, I'm, I'm not compared to great, to, to great people too often, but that's very kind of you. I, I am willing to stand alone, no question about it. In fairness, if I could take one more question from somebody who hasn't asked a question, somebody who hasn't asked a question, if you don't mind. You haven't asked?
He did, I didn't, no.
Did you all swap chairs? We're gonna take two questions then, and I'll take this lady first, we'll finish it. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I, I was concerned if we find more oil, and do we follow the global markets and have to sell their oil to the highest bidder, like China and India? Well, how would you do to keep that oil that we get out of our...
I, I think at this point, oil is geopolitical, and it's, it's, it's a world commodity, and I'm not sure it's necessary that we hold on to every drop of our own oil into our own hands. I, I think pumping it into the system will create the same reality that, affect the supply and demand reality, but it depends on how it works. I don't like, you know, I, that's, I'm really glad you asked me that question, because what we do as Republicans is we, we say we like small government, and then we create big government rules. So if I say, "We need to pass a law that says anything pumped out of America needs to stay in America," I'm artificially rigging the deal for good purposes, and, and I'm gonna be real hesitant to do that. I'm, I'm, I'm much more interested in creating an authentic, free enterprise system where the rules are fairly applied to both all the players and fighting hard for that than I am rigging the deal and being selective about winning, even when I do a big government thing. Do you understand what I'm clumsily trying to say? So it's kinda like the issue of abortion. I'm pro-life. I don't believe that the federal government should be involved in that issue. I believe that's a states' rights issue. And I get grief from that. I'm pro-life, no equivocation, if any, if I have to vote anytime on that issue, it will be a pro-life vote. But you either get big government or you don't, and it's not fair, because I like this issue to take, make big government decisions, and it's really a struggle, and it will irritate some people that I will do that, but when I'm elected, I will. I'm gonna err in the direction of little government, and getting the, the decisions as close to the working reality as I can. One more question.
Carl, you've been pretty much preaching to the choir tonight, and that's good. Most of the discussion's been about global issues, which certainly affect all of us. But one of the things that Congressman Taylor had it was a vision for western North Carolina involving big-pipe broadband capability, which would allow the creation of high-tech, well-paying jobs, so the kids here would have a place to earn a living, a good living. Have you a similar vision for western North Carolina?
He did not get the credit that he deserved for that. I am not going to be a pork guy and an earmark guy, let me just tell you that. People ask me this question, "What are you gonna do?" I'm more interested in fighting to keep our money in our pockets, instead of sending it to Washington, where they can skim it and send us back some community welfare. I think that's wrong. But that said, the things the federal government do, should be involved in, are promises that they make, like to veterans. They've made the promise of disability, the availability of disability insurance, if you make the promise, keep the promise. You made the promise to provide veteran service, do it well, and then infrastructure. You made the promise to provide veterans service, do it well, and then infrastructure. And information is infrastructure, and there's no question about that, whether it's roads or the information highway, I think that's a crucial ingredient to our future. The kids of Western North Carolina deserve the same resources as other folks have to create that bridge to a future of hope. Folks, you've been wonderful. Thank you so much for great questions, I've enjoyed every minute with you. Thank you very much.
(applause)